Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting the call of the day for our May 22, 2024. We want to try to meet and welcome everybody here today. Anybody that's in the virtual world, I'd also welcome y'all. First thing that we need to do today is, I've received a request. I guess y'all can't hear me. I received a request by Mr. Jimmy Brand to participate in the meeting tonight by electronic communication from a remote location due to illness. I have approved such participation under the county's adopt- adopted remote participation policy and ask that the board of supervisors ratify this decision to allow Mr. Brand to participate remotely. Gentlemen, if I can have a motion?
I move to allow Mr. Brand to participate remotely.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Brand, are you online tonight?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, we got you into the meeting, so speak up whenever you want to. All right, our first item on our agenda tonight are budget presentations, and the first one is the Greater Reedville Association. Shawna McCraney.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Good to see you.
Nice to see you. So my name is Shawna McCraney, and I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Reedville Association, a nonprofit organization doing business at the Reedville Fisherman's Museum. As you know, the Festival Hall Committee came to you all back in the fall requesting financial support from the county to help restore the old Reedville School, also known as Festival Hall. Festival Hall is a standalone structure built in 1908. The Hall has served the community in various roles, including hosting Northumberland High School prom, class reunions, weddings, memorial services, anniversary parties, volleyball festivities, and community gatherings. Festival Hall became part of the Greater Reedville Association and the Reedville Fisherman's Museum in 2009, when it was donated to the association by the Burkle family. The Hall was actively used in the community until early 2022, when inspections revealed widespread decomposition in the main wood structures that support the flooring. Currently, the building is not fit for occupancy. We are in the process of applying for grants, but many of the grants need to see that the county is supportive of the efforts to restore the building. By supporting the project monetarily, we may be looked more favorably upon to receive federal and state allocated grants. As you likely know, the Cook family and Omega Protein is matching one-to-one each dollar that is allocated, so you will be doubling a matched grant with any allocation. We appreciate the support you can offer so that we can continue to provide the community with this much-needed space to host community events and gatherings. Thank you for the consideration. We also have provided another one-page project summary that goes into more extensive details.
Okay. Any que- hold on just a second. Any questions from the board?
I should let you know that the community at large has raised over $31,000, and that is with the help of Aquapalooza, a mailing to all the Reedville residents, as well as right now we're conducting a golf cart raffle that is hopefully going to raise about $25,000 for this project. So we are working tirelessly. We also hope to hear from a grant from the Southeast Asian Regent Crescent Organization, which is a federal grant, and we hope to hear from that in early June. That would be a wonderful thing if we got that grant. And we're also going for a Go Virginia grant to support the commercial kitchen in this building.
Okay. All right.
Can you remind us again how much you're asking from the county?
Um, we were asking for $25,000 from the county.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Staff have any?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Jane Blue, Library Director.
Good evening. I have my support with me, Jamie Tucker, who is our President of our Board of Trustees, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you about the budget request that we have for the library. In 2023, we've provided service to 27,105 patrons and answered 5,950 reference questions with 15,152 people using our in-house computers. We keep our Wi-Fi on and accessible 24/7 and have added several synchronous programs, including a very robust after-school program, a computer class for all skill levels, and one-on-one appointment time for computer instruction. The 2024-25 budget year is an opportunity for our partnership and service to the community and a way for the county to continue their commitment to that service. Fiscal year 2425, we will receive an increase in state aid going from $104,605 to $129,178. That's an increase of $24,573. This is because you have faithfully been working your way toward the 67% requirement of our revenue coming from the county we serve. We have been working to increase our allocation from the county annually. The state determines our allocation based on the percentage the county gives based on a three-year average. It does not include this year, it's the past three years. Our income from the county averages 51% of our operating budget for the past three fiscal years. At 67% of our operating budget, we should be realizing $296,874 from the county. In the past five years in good faith, the county has been working to help us reach that goal, and the state library sees this. The new fiscal year will continue to provide challenges as we are consistently experiencing an increased demand for services. In the interest of this challenge and the need to be compliant with state aid requirements, we are asking for $273,515. That amount will put us at 58% of the required income from our tax revenues in the county. This represents a 5% overall funding increase for the county for the next fiscal year, with 3% targeted for salary increases, allowing us to remain competitive with other employers while increasing our funding for technology, books, and programs, which is the bread and butter of our public library. I would like to highlight a few accomplishments during this fiscal year, to include the purchase of the new mobile library with an increase in stops throughout the county of 38%. 100% of the funds for the mobile library came from donations and grants. Our children's programs have increased by 30%, with over 333 programs offered and 939 free scholastic books given out. Online chat service became available during the month of March this year. Current fundraising for our pocket park in the back of the library is happening right now, and it's allowing us to open more space for community events. A robust summer reading program launched last week on May 16th and includes 11 special programs. Strong partnerships with the county schools, YMCA, and the Boys and Girls Club. A staff retention rate of over 90%, which is unheard of in surrounding counties. Over 53 magazines and periodicals available, including another 3,000 online, free to anyone who has a library card. Over 180,000 audio and ebooks available through our consortium. All of these things would not be possible without your financial support to help cover our operating expenses. I am very proud of the service we offer to Northumberland County, and we look forward to continuing our partnership and working with the county in the coming year. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, any board members have any questions for Ms. Blue? Any questions for Ms. Blue?
So you're asking us for the amount of money to bring you up to a 67% county allocation, correct?
I'm asking to work toward that. Right, this year it would be at 58%.
Do you know how other counties in the state of Virginia, how they, where they are?
I do, and we're right about in the middle. We were for a very long time until I got to work with Mr. Tadlock at the bottom, and in the past five years, we've worked our way up. I can actually send you the entire list if you'd like to take a look at it.
I'm just curious, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Staff have any?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good to see y'all, folks.
You too.
All right, next is Rappahannock Community College. This is Jamie Tucker and Shannon Kennedy.
I think this is Jamie's last presentation. So first of all, I want to thank you. Jamie serves as your appointment to the RCC Board, and I get to say thank you. She's an excellent board member. See, she can't say that. And has served as board chair for the past two years, so she, by bylaws, can't serve as board chair again, so we just appreciate her service. And I will let you speak, and if you want to share those Northumberland stats, that'd be great.
It's way too tall.
Everything's always too tall for me, if that's okay. Can you still hear me? All right. Yes, thank you very much. It is a pleasure and an honor to be on the Rappahannock Community College Board representing Northumberland County. The things that I have seen, that we have advanced, the things under Dr. Kennedy's leadership have really benefited our community. Just so you know a little bit about Northumberland County, in the fall of 2023, there were 314 residents attending colleges in the Commonwealth from Northumberland County. 157 of them were going to RCC. That's 50% of college attendees were RCC attendees. We also had 80 students who were involved in our dual enrollment program. That is really significant. We are near the top of what is happening with all the counties that we serve in our area. So I'm very proud of Northumberland County, what we have seen happen. I know there's an economic benefit that comes back to our county because of our RCC students, and I want to thank you for supporting our budget. Speaking of economic impact benefit, we did an economic impact study, actually the 12 counties we serve, and that was, we got that back in January. So for every dollar a student spends at RCC, they gain $7.50 in future additional lifetime earnings. And for every dollar taxpayers spend, which is why we're here, $2.30 return. So we're definitely an excellent investment. Our budget request is 3% over what we asked for last year, it's $9,852. So I thank you for your support on that. Really quickly, I'll tell you now the more fun stuff, what we've got going on at the college. And I do want to mention our Dual Enrollment Instructor of the Year, it was, is a North umberland government teacher, so we're really, just be proud of that. We are working towards building a health sciences facility on the Marshall campus. It will be located, if you are looking at the campus, if you're looking at the Chin House, to the right of the Chin House. That is actually on foundation-owned property, which means we can go a whole lot quicker because I don't have to go through the state regulated regulations. But we are looking at a small health sciences facility that will provide nursing labs, nursing simulation rooms, which we currently do not have, an EMS simulation room, and our diagnostic medical sonography lab. We have one of those in New Kent, and we call it, it's DMS. Our program is echocardiography, so if you get an echocardiogram, you know they have to be certified, and that is what we are doing. We did that at the request of VCU Tappahannock Hospital, and those students, after a two-year degree, their starting salary is about $70,000 a year, so. But we're looking at trying to continue to expand our healthcare programs as well as our technical programs. We will be expanding diesel and HVAC to full-time programs, including dual enrollment on our Glenns campus, and expanding welding as well, adding maritime electrical and residential electrical. Those are some of the new programs, and we're working with the Navy, believe it or not, through the Newport News Shipbuilding for the maritime and the increase in welding. So we've got a lot of irons in the fire, we've got a lot of grant requests out. We do have a request that comes with, we're eligible for an EDA grant based on a weather disaster in February of 2021, and eight of our 12 counties were impacted, it was an ice storm, and that could fund up to 80% of the health sciences building. So we've made it through the first hurdle, I'm waiting on that. And I know I've seen Mr. Long at Northernnet PDC meetings, they've been instrumental in helping us with that, so great partnership. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any questions? All I can say, y'all do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I do know that for a fact, yep.
We really appreciate the support. When we talked about Northumberland County and the impact, and she was talking about the EMS program, I know for a fact that we have Northumberland Volunteer Rescue Squad workers who have attended without certification through RCC, so that has come back and benefited our community as well.
Well, that's very good.
Thank you all so much.
All right, thank y'all. All right, next is Navinak Middlesex Free Health Clinic.
Good evening. I am filling in for Jeannie Nelson, who's the longtime, the only executive director we've had at the Northernnet Free Health Clinic, Northernnet Middlesex Free Health Clinic, we changed her name a couple of years ago, but she had conflict, and I had to be in Richmond on some state healthcare stuff, so she sends her wishes. And my name is Brokey Graham, I'm the treasurer of the Northernnet Free Health Clinic, I've been involved with it for 17 years since I moved down here. And first of all, we want to thank you for all of your support for the 30 years that we have been operating, and we've just entered our 31st year. We started pretty small, but today we're a full-time, we have a full-time dental clinic, a full-time medical clinic, a full-time pharmacy, and some other specialty clinics that you could call it. We bring in urologists and nephrologists and gynecologists and others on a regular basis to see our patients here rather than having to go travel any long distances. In our history, we have seen over 18,400 unduplicated individuals, which I think speaks pretty highly, that there have been that many people in our 30 years that we've been able to treat and that have received service, and we're, the need continues to grow, we were almost 2,100 individuals we served last year. The number grows, we continue to add programs, we've got an exciting program that's going to kick off in the second half of the year dealing with mental health and addiction issues. It's a program that a free health clinic started in Roanoke, and it's been very successful. And they wanted to expand that type of approach, and we were picked out of all the other free health clinics to sort of take that program and run with it, and we've got a lot of hope that there's, we've never really been involved in mental health and addiction issues before, so this is some new territory for us, but it's a very needed one. We talk to, we talk to people in our counties we serve, and which are, by the way, Lancaster, Northumberland, Middlesex, Richmond, and Westmoreland, five counties we serve. And all the counties provide us with some level of support, and all of that is very, very helpful. Our budget this coming year will be over $2 million for the first time because of the cost of adding on programs and expanding, and so support from the state, support from the counties, support from individuals, support from anywhere really is very much appreciated and needed. I handed out some brochure there with a lot of, lot of information, I doubt you all have had a chance to look at it, but, you know, I'll stop if anybody has any questions, be glad to address them.
Any questions? Board members have any questions? No questions? Staff have any? No, sir, we don't have any questions, but I haven't had a chance to read this, but I'll, I'll get to that. And if we have questions, we'll get back to you.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you.
We all agree.
You too, sir, thank you for coming. Next would be the Boys and Girls Club.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to come this evening. We do want to recognize three of our board members that are here with us tonight from Northumberland, it's Jackie Clayton, Bobby Blackwell, and Erin Hepburn, so we're always excited to have the support with us. My name is Jackie Ammons, and I started Boys and Girls Club of the Northernnet as Resource Development and Marketing Director. I came to the organization working on the part-time status last fall. I currently own Weekend's Fashion in Kilmarnock and serve as president of Lancaster by the Bay Chamber. I replaced Jill Sears, who was previously the director, about two months ago. So I'm now in this full-time and welcome it to the organization. With me is Will Bridges, who will now introduce himself.
Thanks, Jackie. So I'm Will Bridges, I'm the Operations Director with the Boys and Girls Club of the Northernnet. I've got a long history with nonprofits. I was with the YMCA's as the Sports and Aquatics Director for about seven years at Kilmarnock and Northumberland. Before that, I was with the Boy Scouts of America down in Newport News as a district executive.
So in January, the Boys and Girls Club of Northernnet requested support an amount of $15,000 to support our budget of over $500,000 at our Northumberland club. This budget helps to provide training for our staff as well as to expand our program to directly impact the club members' experience.
And I'm just going to go over some numbers regarding kids in Northumberland. In Northumberland, there's approximately 1,200 students enrolled at Northumberland Schools. 80% of those are eligible for free or reduced lunches, the average statewide is 42%. 29% of our students are chronically absent, and 63% meet academic proficiency standards.
Our goal is always to provide opportunities for educational growth as well as a safe place for the continued and ongoing growth of our county's youth. We start with our youngest members to instill strong values as they develop their character and leadership skills. We promote healthy lifestyles through programs such as Teen Chef and athletic programs within our clubhouses and in community partnerships with the YMCA, such as swim instruction, basketball teams, and soccer teams.
So I'm going to talk briefly about the current athletic programs we've got going on. Past couple of years, with partnering with the Northumberland YMCA, we've been able to allow our members to have free swim lessons partnered with the YMCA. We're looking to continue that, continue that this summer as well as in Richmond County and Lancaster. We had about 50 kids go through the program last year, hoping to hit those numbers again this year. I got an opportunity to receive a Michael Phelps Foundation grant for an additional $12,000 to support our swim lessons. And I tend to train down in Phoenix, I actually got to meet the man himself, Michael Phelps, and that was pretty cool. Other sports programming we have going on, we have partnered with the YMCA in basketball programming. We had two six-to-eight-year-old teams and one nine-and-11-year-old team. They played their games in Kilmarnock, but we had representation from Northumberland County as well. Had about 40 kids participate, hoping to grow that as we continue on. And we also have an MLB Major League Baseball grant, where we're looking to partner with little leagues in the counties for registration in fall and spring ball next year.
One of our main focuses with our teen program is helping the teens think about their goals after high school. Community partners such as the relationships we have with Pastor Mo and Youth Technology Networks, Bobby Blackwell, who is here tonight, are helping the teens determine their interests and explore different career options through virtual reality. One of our newest initiatives set forth just this past week at our national conference in Atlanta is we will now be working with young adults ages 18 to 24. This will further enhance one of our goals in making our members career-ready.
So in closing, we hope that we all have a shared opinion in accordance of our youth in this community. The youth need us as mentors, and our club serves as a safe place both after-school and all-day during the summers. The cost of our services per member is just over $1,400 per year, but we tend, we keep membership fees much lower than that. Our year is split into trimesters, so we have a spring trimester, summer, and a fall trimester. Fall runs from August to December, that's for after-school hours, 3:15 to 7:00. Kids receive a free dinner and snack, and that costs parents $15 for the entire trimester. Summer, we're open from 7:30 to 5:00. It's a little bit more expensive during the summertime, it's $25 per week per member to cover additional staff, staffing, and field trip fees. And summertime, they get breakfast, lunch, and snack as well for no additional charge. And then, so as of before, we also are planning on renovating and adding on to our existing site that we acquired last year at 8,200 Northumberland Highway. We're looking at adding a gymnasium, a STEM center, and other opportunities for our youth to grow. This will not only serve as a center for our youth, but as a greater place for our community as well.
Thank you so much for inviting us to speak today. Please know that any support you can provide to us is greatly appreciated, and will help impact the youth of Northumberland County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any board members have any questions or comments?
I know you said $25. Do you have scholarships tonight, your kids?
Yeah, we offer scholarships to our members. Any family that needs scholarship help, you can come talk to our front desk staff at any location, and we'll help them out with scholarship opportunities.
Thank you.
Anything else, Miss Law?
That's it.
All right, any other board members have any questions, comments, staff? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, next item would be the county administrative items. Ms. Tadlock, you take over, please.
The first item we have is the school budget. We have held a public hearing on that matter. I don't know if the board has any specific questions. Believe the Superintendent, Director of Finance are here this evening, if you have any questions.
Board members have any questions on the county budget? Mr. Brand, you haven't gone to sleep on us, have you? He's gone to sleep.
I haven't gone to sleep, I've just taken it all in.
You have any questions on the county budget, Mr. Brand?
No. No.
All right. On the school budget?
School budget? Oh, school, I'm sorry, school budget, let me say. All right. Any board members have any questions on school budget?
Not at this moment.
I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Superintendent. I'm sure since we recommend the 5% for all county employees, except the sheriff and EMS, 8.3, have you had a chance to talk to her about?
I have not had a conversation with the superintendent about that.
So we want to make sure everybody gets the same thing, you know, as for us.
I will follow up with them.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Not at this moment, no, sir.
Still think we have a lot to work out yet.
I believe, well, the state has passed its budget, and I believe the school division, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Booth, that you all will receive your information next week?
They're saying the 30th is when we should get the council.
May the 30th, Ms. Booth?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the board or anything? All right. You want to set any other work sessions, anything?
Well, I do have a small presentation as far as the county budget goes.
All right.
If you want to go through that.
Yeah, whichever you want to do.
All right, so as proposed, and this was uploaded last week, total budget- So as proposed, and this was uploaded last week, the total budget is $50,513,252, with the total estimated expenditures of $46,241,375, which is a proposed increase of $4,980,158. Next slide. The fiscal year '25 budget does include the request as submitted by all departments. With that, we are looking at an eight-cent real estate tax increase, so $0.69 per $100. Current rate is $0.61 per $100, and that has been the rate for the last three fiscal years. Some of the budget impacts that we see on the overall budget for all departments, we did have a health insurance increase of 7.2 percent, which is approximately a $100,000 increase. Our VRS rate did increase from 12.47 percent to 12.88 percent. Before that, for fiscal year '24, from fiscal year '23 and '24, the rate increased to 12.47 percent from the 10.08 percent, and that was due to including the EMS into hazardous duty positions. The VRS hybrid employer rate contribution did increase. That's about $50,000. A 5 percent proposed salary increase is approximately $179,000. That includes all the benefits except the health insurance, which was previously discussed. And that does not include the competitive pay increase and public safety. We'll touch on that in short. This is just a graphic that shows the percentage of monies to each of the categories within the county budget, and as I go through the next several slides, that I'll touch on these major categories where the major or larger increases are being requested. So for general government administration, the board did increase its salary, and by code, that could only begin in January of this year, so it was only a half of a fiscal year. So fiscal year '24 only contained six months, so fiscal year '25 is going to include the full year for the board. The workers' compensation did increase, $11,000. The, we are looking at succession planning within the county administration's office that we are looking for a position finance specialist slash budget analyst, and that total cost, which includes benefits and health insurance, is approximately $84,685. We do have the reassessment this year, which occurs every six years, and that estimate is about $450,000. The county attorney fee increased $18,000. We did sign a contract with the now attorney in 2021, and that fee has not increased since the signing of that contract. County auditor fees, we're seeing an increase in those at $22,750, and we are also seeing increased cost on IT side of things regarding our maintenance contracts, telecommunications, internet, and computer equipment that needs to be replaced. On the judicial administration side of things, we do have the detention expense increase, and that is with Merrimack Center down in James City County. That's about $9,600 increase. Internet, telecommunications increase, about $13,000 increase on that side, and that's currently being reviewed by IT. On the public safety side, there is a proposed competitive pay increase in benefits total as far as the, what's being requested by the chief and the sheriff, and that total is about $404,000. And they are requesting that to be competitive with the surrounding localities. Maintenance service contract increases from the sheriff's office and EMS. Sheriff's Office, $6,000; EMS, $11,240. Sheriff's Office additional deputy being requested, $77,394. That does include the benefits and health insurance in that number. Animal shelter is requesting $21,600 increase, and some of that is, part of that is part-time wages being requested. Year two, the request by the volunteer fire department to increase vehicle equipment contribution, we did the one installment of the $49,000 for the current fiscal year, and this is the second installment of that, the $49,238. Increase in equipment and supplies for EMS, $57,000, and that is tied to some of the new requirements coming down from two EMS agencies. Also maintains the 5 percent increase to the volunteer fire and rescue, includes additional staffing for building department that was added in fall of '23, and that's now being realized in the fiscal year '25 budget, and that's $90,416, which does include benefits and health insurance. We are going to see an increasing cost on next-generation 911, about $60,000 is what we're estimating, and we are also going to see increased cost regarding the cell tower lease for the regional emergency radio system for the regional radio, and that's approximately $54,000. On public work side, we are going to see an increase on waste management, MXI recycling cost based on new contract for the fiscal year '24, and that's about $300,000. And MXI is tied to that household hazardous waste day. We anticipate increased cost on electrical, water, material supplies, fuel, and on the fuel that's currently out to bid, we piggyback on that with the School Division. So that's due, I believe, next week. We do have in the budget an additional position for janitorial position, $50,715, which does include the benefits and health insurance. Under Health and Welfare, the Health Department is requesting for a $17,000 increase. Community Services Board, $9,300 increase. Outside agency request totals $126,706. $50,000 of that is for new request, and $76,706 are existing agencies, departments that we do contribute to that are asking for increased requests. Educational, we've held the public hearing that was held on May 8. Again, a total increase of $569,146. Total increase to local funding, $1.7 million, but that's again due to the composite index modification. Parks and Recreation, YMCA is requesting $25,000 request for the next five years for the pool cover. Northumberland Library is asking for their increase of $13,000, approximately $13,000. Under Community Development, position being requested, Assistant Zoning Administration, Administrator, excuse me, total cost $73,423, and that also includes benefits and health insurance. Under Non-Departmental, total CIP request is $1,021,650, and that includes requests from the sheriff and the school. It does not include any of the sanitary district CIP requests. As we are looking at other options for that, ARPA funds pretty much have been spoken for, so what we would need to look at would be our enterprise fund, our sanitary district fund for any CIP request related to the sanitary district. New this year is we also have the Regional Radio Debt Service. That's $507,615. Just to give you an overview, as far as our current debt service, we do have the School Division. It's $26,316,891 remaining. That does get paid off in 2037, and that payment is about $2 million annually. We add it to our debt service, the regional radio system, emergency radio system. That total debt service is $6,897,058. And the payoff on that is approximately $2036. It kind of gives a high-level pass of the larger request that we are seeing in the budget this year. Try to answer any questions. In front of you now is the schedule. We do have a May 30 joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and School Board. Depending on if the board wishes to schedule another work session, we can do that. If the board wishes to have the public hearing, that proposed date is June 6 if the board wishes. I would just need some direction from the board as to move forward with that on how you all would like to proceed.
I had a budget work session penciled in for June the 12th. It's 5:30. Is that not accurate?
We can have a work session June 12 as well. That may have been kicked around at one point in time.
All right. What does the board want to do?
Okay.
Want a work session on that day, too?
Yeah, June 12, right.
Yeah.
What time?
5:30?
5:30, I would certainly think so.
Another budget work session on June 12 at 5:30.
5:30?
I just think it might be appropriate to have one after we have the public hearing on the 6th.
Yeah, we got one on the 6th, right?
And 6 is their, that's county budget hearing.
June the 6th, that's at 5:30, too, right, or 6?
That's at 7:00.
It's at 7:00 p.m.
So on the 6th. What, so you have one after that?
That would be on the 12th. After our budget hearing, we'd have the next meeting be on the 12th. We also have a regular board meeting on the 13th. And we can have a budget work session on the 18th of June, too, if y'all want it.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
What time, 5:30 or what?
5:30 on that one, if you want it.
5:30 on the 18th. So we got the 6th, 12th, 13th, right, and the 18th. Is that it?
Yeah, we got the 30th. It's a joint meeting with school, school board. We got the 6th, that's our county budget hearing. The 13th, 5:30, board meeting, budget work session. I mean, that's at 5:30, normal board meeting.
June, May the 30th, what time?
6 o'clock. And a one on the 18th at 5:30? Did that one, Ms. Long?
Yes.
All right.
Regular board meeting is when?
13th.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Brand, you get all that?
Is it asleep?
I got it.
All right. You have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
All right.
I've got one, Mr. Tadlock. Waste management, when does our contract end with the folks we're under contract with currently?
It's a five-year contract. We just renegotiated that. So fiscal year '24 was our first year, so we'll be going into our second year.
Do we pay the electric bill, or do they pay the bill on that?
The electric to the facility?
Yeah. Any other questions? Mr. Williams, have you anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Long, you have anything? Mr. Fisher?
No, no, thank you.
Mr. Brand, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything right now.
All right. Ms. Tadlock, what else you have, or you have any more comments?
The only thing that I would need is the board to take action to authorize to go ahead and advertise the fiscal year '25 budget for June 6, if the board wishes to hold the public hearing at that time.
A pleasure to the board. If it is, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we advertise the budget on June 6 at 7:00.
Second. I got a motion, second. Got any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. What else you have, Ms. Tadlock?
Only other thing I have is for closed meeting.
Nothing else? All right. Well, then, I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting now.
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711a7, for consultation with legal counsel and/or staff pertaining to specific legal matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the board's negotiating or litigating posture. Sections 2.2, 3711a29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, excuse me, county administrator or assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia 40, Section 2.2, 3712F.
All right. Have a motion?
It's moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in a closed meeting. Thank you all for coming.